Okay, great. Thanks very much. So I will start. Good afternoon, council. We're here for a special council meeting on the draft capital plan. First, acknowledge we're in the unceded traditional territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Sabaltees people and thank them for their generosity to all of us who live here. And thanks to staff for everything you're doing. Can't believe you do it, but you do it, and it's making Vancouver better every day. Thank you so much. Clerks, come with the roll call, please.
Mayor Stewart in the chair, councillor Carr. Councillor Digenova. Councillor Digenova. Vote leave of absence, councillor Fry. Councillor Swanson.
Here.
Councillor Hardwick.
Present.
Councillor Weeb. Councillor Dominado.
Present.
Councillor Dominado.
Present.
Councillor Bly.
Present.
Councillor Kirby Young.
Present.
You have quorum, Mayor Stewart.
Thanks so much. So this special council meeting has been called in accordance with section 14.5, the procedure by law. The purpose of this meeting is to provide council with an overview of the preliminary draft of the 2023 to 2026 capital plan and opportunity for council input. Let's see here. So there was memo sent from the deputy city manager on March 31st. This includes an overview of the proceedings from this meeting, which convened on March 31st and reconvened today. March 31st, staff delivered presentations to council that provided an overview of the 2023 to 2026 draft capital plan, as well as the capital plans or some of the service areas. And we asked one round of questions. At today's meeting, staff will deliver the remaining service areas presentations, after which we have the opportunity to ask questions, another round of questions. There's no speakers today at this meeting. The members of the public may send comments to council by using the online web form listed on the agenda webpage. And the public may view these proceedings online or attend in person at City Hall. Robust public engagement will begin in May to gather the public's feedback on the draft capital plan. Speakers will have the opportunity to address council on the draft 23 on this capital plan at the council meeting of April 26th and the final council meeting on July 6th. So a few months, they'll make the final decision. A few reminders, go to Twitter on @Vancityclerk to follow the progress of the meeting and just remember to use first name, last name, role or title and avoid using gendered honorifics. Thanks so much. We have the deputy city manager here to introduce the remaining capital plan category presentations.
So this is part two of a workshop we started on April 31st, and I'm just going to provide a little presentation and share the intended format for today's conversation. I'm wondering if I could get my PowerPoint up there. Thank you very much. So just to supplement what the mayor said, we did maybe within the last two hours circulate to council an updated set of the PowerPoint slides, just with a few tweaks. So that should be that will be the updated set we're using today as compared to the ones we distributed on March 31st. And as well, we distributed to council the beginnings of council's responses to, sorry, staff's responses to council's questions concerning capital planning. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a couple of minutes. So the top half of the slide shows you what we did on March 31st and the discussion we had around capital planning. And the bottom half lays out what we intend to do today. So I'm going to provide a little introduction. Then we're going to carry on with our service category presentations. We got through almost all of them on the 31st. We have three presenters left and they will take the stand after I finish this. And then we're going to have Grace Cheng from our finance department sharing some of the information you requested on March 31st, what we've been able to gather together in the last few days. Then we'll have the, it's not written on the agenda, but our city manager, Paul Mokry, will come up and just say a few words to wrap up the staff presentation part of this. And then really, it's over to councils, parts nine and 10 there. We thought we would suggest you break up your conversation first, number nine, into the large one-off projects, those that are currently in the contemplated plan and those that aren't. And we have a lot of staff, too many for me to list here, but you can see behind me, we have a lot of CLT and their staff and even more on the WebEx to respond to whatever questions council might have of us regarding these projects. And then our suggestion is just an open discussion for over an hour. That will be questions to staff or discussion among yourself as you see fit. So that's the plan. Just a couple of introductory notes on where we're at. So we offered to answer your questions at March 31st and you came through. We have received 62 questions from council to date, and there might be more coming in as we speak. Staff's done an amazing job of responding to, I think, about two-thirds of those, and you have that in your inbox now. It didn't get to you very long ago, but you do have it. And as well, the city clerk's going to post those responses on the public website. And of course, we will update that memo. You're going to see about one-third where there's responses pending. We'll update that memo to provide those responses to you in full. And of course, if there's more questions coming out of today's discussion, we're happy to respond to those as well. Couple of corrections. Slides 24 and 69 of the secondary deck, that's the service category presentation deck, have been presented. There was just a couple of addition errors on the slide, and those have been taken care of. And you have that deck in your inbox as well. And the clerk has again posted that corrected deck on the public website. Mayor Stewart listed the next few touchpoints with council on the capital plan, but I'll just reiterate here with a slide in front of us. So today, you're going to be hearing more about the, I think I've got the date wrong there. Oh, I see what's going on. Today, we're having a workshop conversation, and on April 26th is when we're going to be coming back to you formally to a public council meeting, seeking direction to approve the draft 23 to 26 capital plan, and also get your direction to initiate public engagement on that draft plan. Now, just a heads up, council, that that report needs to be finalized by staff within the next week or so, just to allow for our internal system and getting it posted on the public website with a sufficient time. So we don't have a lot of time to turn around a lot of big changes now. And that's just the nature of the beast here in terms of the timing we're working within. On April 26th, we'll come back to you. And again, it's going to be tight timing because staff's going to have about, I think, about a week before they bring that work out to public engagement. So the really best opportunity for council to make, we want to hear your direction today definitely and on April 26th, but the best time to make big changes, if there are going to be any, to what you see in the preliminary draft right now, will be at the July council meeting or leading up to the July council meeting. I just wanted to frame out again, I've shared that timeline with you on the 31st. I just wanted to share it with you again here. We're now going to move into presenting the service categories. You'll see this list. We got through almost everybody. We just have left our chief technology officer, Tyke Healy, and then we have representatives from both our police department and our fire department to talk about their aspects of the capital plan. So with that, I'm going to turn it over. This should only take us a few minutes, actually, because we're almost all the way through. I'm just going to pull up the right slides for this and invite our chief technology officer Tyke Healy to come present on our technology plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen, and thank you, council, for the opportunity to present today on the technology capital plan. Increasingly over the last two years, technology and the services we deliver are critical enabling components to the delivery of services for many of our business units. The availability and the quality of those services really comes down to continued investment across both the core technology and the business technology categories of our capital plan. In terms of core technology, we're looking at approximately $80 million throughout the next four years, spread across four major divisions, including infrastructure, client services, platforms and applications, and enterprise data. And I'll give you some contextual examples on the next slide of what the breakdown behind each of those are. In terms of business technology, technology services is evolving to become a much more strategic partner with our business units. We've conducted a series of engagements with the GMs and their delegates over the last number of months, and have focused in on the following six areas in terms of investment recommendations during the next capital plan. We've T-shirt sized those in terms of allocation, and the specific initiatives that would fit under each of those will form the part of annual technology plans throughout the course of the four years. In order, those are SAP for our HR and finance business processes, a catch-all for business initiatives where we have specific one-off initiatives to advance the strategic priorities of specific departments. The city and its departments manages a range of assets, everything from trees to infrastructure to buildings, and the technology platforms to support that asset management is the third category, the continued digital transformation of our permits and licensing business function. And then the following two, data enablement and digital workplace, really are about how we use the enterprise data that we have in the city of Vancouver to drive better decision-making, as well as to take advantage of the improvement in tools and technologies to improve the efficiency of how we work and how we collaborate. I should also note that VPD and VPL also have spend allocations within these categories and manage those spend allocations independently. In terms of the current capital plan, there's a lot of content on this slide, but really want to focus in on, you know, the fact that we've upgraded many of the key platforms that those services are delivered on. So if you think about business licenses as an example, that's delivered through the Amanda platform, which underwent a major upgrade two years ago. We've launched a new open data platform to allow residents, businesses alike, to explore and analyze the large amounts of open data that we publish on the city of Vancouver website. In terms of the nuts and bolts, the infrastructure enhancements, all of this depends on a resilient and secure network. We have a hybrid data center program to create copies of our data outside of the seismic zone. That's a program that will continue into the next capital plan and will require increased and continued investment. And just in the last year, we've obtained a new Microsoft enterprise agreement, which puts us on a much more modern footprint when it comes to our productivity suite. In terms of some of the business technology advancements on the right-hand side of the slide, you'll note that we can now allow for submissions of electronic plans for certain permits. We have an empty home stacks declaration portal, which allows over 185,000 homeowners per year to declare the status of their property for the purposes of that initiative. And internally, we've deployed applications with our partners in VFRS to improve how they track their gear using RFID technology. And that's just a small sampling of some of the initiatives from the current capital plan. In terms of the next four-year cycle, we continue to expect to continue with upgraded platform pieces. The Power BI implementation there, for example, will transform how our business units can access, interpret, and drive insights from their enterprise data. The data center co-location program, which gets our copies of our key enterprise data outside of the seismic zone, will continue. And obviously, you know, with the shift to more hybrid and remote work, we're seeing an increase in the number of laptops and desktop replacements that are happening within the city, which will have a budget implication. And I've already gone through the business priority initiatives. There will be initiatives in each annual plan within each of those six areas. VPD and VPL again will continue with their server network enhancements and infrastructure enhancements on the core side, as well as key business initiatives for their departments. In terms of unfunded elements, like I mentioned, there's been a significant shift from desktops to laptops during the pandemic. There are budget implications on that hardware replacement program should that trend continue. And of course, we have a number of levers in terms of, you know, hardware lifecycle that we can look at, but that's a potential increase in terms of our budget. And then current unknowns include, you know, the capacity and the demand on our city of Vancouver fiber network. A lot of dependency there on the pace of the IoT program with overlaps to the Department of Engineering and how quickly that progresses. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Tyke. I actually failed to mention, we also have one more presentation, and that is on heritage buildings, and that's going to be presented by the general manager of Planning Urban Design and Sustainability. So we have three more, not two more. And so Teresa O'Donnell, thanks.
Thank you, Karen, and good afternoon, council. We've got just three pretty quick slides here. The first one, in 2019, council did approve a set of heritage incentive to support citywide conservation. Each of these three programs cover different classes of heritage buildings, from mid-rise to high-rise to low-rise buildings through the Heritage Facade Grant program. We also support Heritage House Conservation efforts. Council approves that as an annual grant to the Heritage, the Vancouver Heritage Foundation for dissemination through that program for a number of houses. We've had a lot of great successes over the last four years, and I know council's always delighted to see those come forward. We've had four major grants delivered under the Heritage Incentive Program for about $9.8 million, and we do anticipate a couple more before the end of this year. Heritage Facade, of course, three major projects. We've delivered two at about $150,000 plus one more before the end of the year for about $50,000. And the Heritage House Conservation Grant, which we delivered almost 113 projects, we anticipate another 35 before the end of this year. So that's been a great success. And in this capital plan, we do expect to see six to eight projects coming forward in terms of the big program, the Heritage Facade Rehabilitation. We're talking with eight applicants right now to improve and extend their existing program. And then the Heritage House Conservation Grant, at least another 150 projects within that four years. So all in all, I think the project, the program has been a good success, and we're excited to see that continue. And Zlatan Janovic is also online in case we have any questions.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Teresa. Now we're remaining to have to do with public safety. We're going to, I'm going to ask the fire chief, Karen Frye, to come out up here and discuss the fire department aspects of our proposed capital plan. Thank you.
That's perfect. Thank you. Thank you, your worship and council. So as well, we always work with REFM on most of our capital facilities. Vancouver is serviced, I think I can go the next one, by a network of 19 fire halls located across the city and one out at UBC. The location of fire halls is in Tegrel to our response capabilities that we address through our operational budgets and staffing levels. We strategically deploy our resources to the areas where services needed, change of demand and call volumes. Our response times and buildup of resources, as we always kind of talk about in our ERF, is also critical. The key is to get the right amount of firefighters on scene within the standards. I'd like to point out that our fire hall is in fact what we call firehouses. Our staff live and work in these facilities 24 hours a day. They are a place of refuge, rest, organization, and house for our apparatus and crews. As our city grows, the complexities grow, our departments grow, and so must our facilities. We have certain areas within our city, including the Camby Corridor and Main Street, that have previously been identified in several reports as kind of future growth areas. Fifteen of our 20 fire halls do not even have air conditioning. So I would like just to remind that is some of our capital investments in the future, things that we'll be looking for. We really noticed it this year during the heat dome, and heat will continue to increase. Within our capital budget, we also have buildings such as our training facilities, our mechanics and fleet, all of our apparatus, and our large equipment. Some of our key achievements over the past four years include two newly replaced fire halls. One is at Station Five, and currently 17, which is opening in the next, within the next month. These are, 17 is the first fire hall in the world that has the following four certifications: a passive house, net zero energy, zero greenhouse gases, and it is lead gold. We also have renewal of our apparatus. It's continuous in any fire department based on best practice and insurance ratings. Really through the Fire Underwriter Survey, we have to replace our frontline apparatus every 15 years. In our next contained currently within the 2023 to 2026 capital plan, we will be designing, hopefully, and renewing Fire Hall Six, which is the West End Fire Hall and part of a community hub. We'll be doing capital maintenance programs of about $2.1 million, which really just goes to maintain our existing facilities, roofs, windows, replacement renovations, which is directed to update or improve any living conditions in things like equity and diversity within our facilities, heating upgrades, HVAC and air conditioning. We have some money set aside for those. Ongoing vehicle replacements, as we included. We will continue to move towards electrification for our small fleet. So even as we replace our gas-powered vehicles to more of a hybrid or electric vehicles, and then new fleet equipment, which is a rehab support unit, rightsizing our fleet, and as well as an apparatus for our Hall Five that we receive staffing for this year. So underfunded elements, we have the Camby Corridor Fire Hall. I mentioned that earlier. Some land acquisition for that, planning and design, probably within the next capital budget. Also, fire hall renewals. We have Kensington Fire Hall. We call Fire Hall Twenty, which is conditioned, in the needs assessment report, it is considered poor quality, as well as our downtown South Fire Hall. And that one right now, I visited it today. We have 11 firefighters in there, and it's built for a staffing of eight. Also, a fire truck maintenance facility relocation and expansion to our training center. Again, the implications of unfunding any of these is our service levels, effective fire force for new facilities, resiliency, work safe requirements for heating and cooling of our facilities, and capacity and growth. And with that, I'm done.
Thank you. We now have Steve Rye from Vancouver Police Department going to present the police aspects of the plan. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Karen, and good afternoon, mayor and council. Let me just adjust this, Karen. Where is it? Thank you. Perfect. I'll just start off with this slide to just provide some context. So the key achievable is from the last plan involved our VPD technology, where we worked on the digital evidence management. And that's an ongoing project for not only VPD, but the province, for every police department in BC, including RCMP detachments. It's really being driven by the new expectation for police to provide and flow information to Crown and all the other agencies, including some social agencies. So that is something that's going to be imposed on us, has been imposed on us. We're working with the city, and it's a key pillar going forward for public safety. Obviously, smartphones is a part of digital evidence management, having the connected officer, not having to leave the road, being able to do things from the street or from your patrol car. So appreciate the city really working well with us on that. That also includes enhanced online reporting, making it more accessible to come into the, from your computer to report crime, ask for different types of assistance. We're doing a fleet refresh, evolution and greening. We're hoping to get by the next plan, this next plan, to 30% green, and that will include electric and hybrid. We're doing very well thus far. We've got 22 electrics so far, two EVs, two plug-ins, 43 hybrid, and we've got 20 more on route with, including the RJ McBee. We're going to try to make that as efficient for the climate as possible, the new one. So also, just on REFM, just to provide context, so we've got a lot of pressure in our facilities for space as we're diversifying around the EDI lens. Our women's locker room had a major expansion. REFM was very supportive of that. And obviously, the lobby expansion is, that's a leased building with a very tight space with ICBC taking up about half the building, and it's a very tight lobby, as most of you know. So we did some expansion work there. So going into the current plan, the capital plan draft, we've got three major buckets. We're looking at a consolidated post-disaster facility, so a main headquarters. We've got 11 different buildings right now, and it's not to consolidate just our working environment. It's very inefficient and all that, moving between buildings. But this is really for the city's legacy and risk management for the next decade and the next generation of all citizens. Major disaster here. None of our facilities will withstand a San Francisco or LA kind of disaster or anything. And so there's all sorts of opportunities here to not only consolidate a police headquarters, it could be the city's emergency management working in there. It could be fire. It could be just an all-purpose where communications, where all, you know, you can manage people coming in to assist, officers, firefighters. You just need a building that can coordinate that, that can withstand the pressure of what could happen. So that's a legacy item. Digital transformation and modernization. So as I said earlier, you know, we're right there in Canada, leading lots of frontline initiatives, predictive policing and all those technologies. But that's going to continue on how we integrate all the evidence and how we report and how we fight crime and provide assistance. So that's going to create a lot of efficiencies on human resource efficiencies, saving time and energy. And obviously, I touched on the continued evolution of our fleet and doing our part around the climate. So the next slide, I'm just going to speak a little bit more about the consolidated post-disaster headquarters. It is about, you know, that's a leased building, Camby. It's tight. We share it with another company, ICBC. We're going to lose our kiosk lot there that houses the bulk of our fleet, hundreds of vehicles. And so that headquarters and the Gravely Building, it's a very unique setup in North America for that much back and forth. We really need a central location. The city actually requires a central location all-purpose, you know, building that, you know, from bomb-proof to fireproof to earthquake-proof to flood, everything. So that's something our board is really looking at and supporting as, you know, if we're looking at one item long-term to lock up some space, some plan. So that's a very important item going forward. And just at the end of the day, you know, I mentioned we have 11 facilities, you know, from the Dog Squad, Marine, Gravely, Camby, you know, the property office, the TTC, really support REFM being well-funded to support not just us, but I think everyone, you know, from roof leaks, there's a lot of buildings with a lot of maintenance happening, and we really appreciate REFM being a strong partner, being able to fund and support us. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that concludes. You've now heard from all the major service categories within the capital plan, and we tried to make it as coherent as possible for you, council, where you heard for each one, major achievements, what's in the proposed plan as contemplated right now, the draft preliminary plan, and then if there's boards involved for the library, police, and park board, the board direction concerning the plan, and then finally, what elements are not currently funded. Because as you know, we have a lot of projects chasing not enough money, so hard choices all around. We're now going to move back to just a little more staff presentation before we turn it over. We're now going to move back to just a little more staff presentation before we turn it over to to you, council, for your discussion and and questions. Going to ask Grace Chang to now come up from our long term financial strategy group. And she's going to present a few slides responding to questions that council you asked staff on March thirty first. So Grace, are you, oh, you're on Webex. You're going to magically appear. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. This is Grace Chang, Director of Long Term Financial Strategy. So further to the the capital plan workshop last week, there were a number of requests from council to staff, so we're going to address some of those questions today. However, there will be some questions that we will be addressing in future council meetings. The first four that we're going to address today is, the first one, there was a question about what is the implication for increasing infrastructure renewal funding by more than one percent that is already built into the draft plan? So we're going to address it. The second question that we're going to address is, there is some question about can we use DCL towards infrastructure renewal programs? So we're going to address that. The third question is, what is the amount or the level of discretion that council can can effect right now with regards to the proposed housing investment in this, the next upcoming capital plan? So we're going to talk about that. And the last one that we're going to address today is to show you the major projects and the location of those projects within the city, so you can have an idea in in terms of the geographical kind of allocation of those projects. And what we're going to come back in the next couple of council meetings will be to share how the proposed capital plan is contributing to four of the key elements the council has been talking about, which is G H G reduction, climate change adaptation, amenity and infrastructure renewal, and also housing. And also there will be a specific overview for council to understand how the capital plan is contributing towards climate adaptation as well as mitigation investments. Next line, please. So the first question, just to clarify that, or maybe just a reminder that within the current draft twenty-three and to twenty-six capital plan, we have already incorporated a one percent tax increase for each of the next four years. This is consistent with the current plan that we have already kind of built in in order to increase the funding envelope for the renewal program. So this has generated an additional a hundred million dollar for the next four years. However, if council choose to increase the funding envelope for the renewal program, for every quarter percent increase in that tax increase for each year, it will generate an additional twenty-five million dollar. So if council were to increase from one percent to two percent for each of the the coming years for for the the coming capital plan, we can generate an additional hundred million dollar again for the renewal program. Next line, please. So with regards to the question about whether we can use DCL for infrastructure renewal. So we have highlighted three, I would say, guiding documents that guide the usage of DCL. The first one is the provincial DCL best practices guide. In here is specifically said that DCCs, which is equivalent to DCL that we use in in Vancouver, it is to service the needs for new development. So this is not about like maintenance and and replacement of the existing infrastructure. And within the Vancouver Charter, again, it is very clearly documented that development anticipated to take place in the area should contribute DCL so that it can contribute to the need of those projects as a result of arising as a result of the new development. And we also use this, the city's financing growth study, that is a policy which also guides specifically saying that DCL and development contributions, they should not be used to maintain and replace aging infrastructure. So that being said, when we renew, say, for example, a community center, there is always a renewal portion of it as well as an expansion of it. So the renewal portion of it, we cannot use DCL, we will be using property tax. However, on the on the expansion piece, we will be using either DCL or CAC towards the expansion portion of the the project. Next line, please. So the third question that we have is of the six hundred and seventeen million dollar of housing investment in the draft capital plan, what is the level of flexibility? So we just want to kind of at a high level quantify, you know, for council's interest. So in terms of purely not flexible, sixty-five percent of it is really not flexible because of it, three hundred million dollar of it is relating to the in kind turnkey housing that council has already approved as part of the rezoning in public hearings. So these are the projects that is conditions of rezoning. And then we're just kind of waiting for the developers or the development to kind of contribute to the city, the turnkey housing as per public hearing kind of approval. So and also we have included eighty million dollar from empty homes tax. And as you are aware, there is very specific, I would say, requirement, how the empty homes tax can be used for it within the Vancouver Charter. So we cannot allocate, you know, this empty homes tax for non housing purposes. And then some of the very specific housing related partner funding that cannot be reallocated. And then there are roughly twenty percent of the six hundred and seventeen seventy million dollar. There is some flexibility, but not a lot. Namely, council can make, I'll say, changes to the policy with regards to the amount of waiver or reduction in the DCL for purpose built rental housing. And then also as well, some of the cash CAC allocated to affordable housing. Some of them, they're also allocated through the public hearing process. So there is some flexibility, but not a lot. And then there is, I'll say fifteen percent of those is, it has more flexibility. Those are relating to the future DCL that will be collected. So as you are aware, there will, the the city is also kind of reviewing our existing, I'll say, DCL allocation between housing, childcare, transportation, utilities and also part. So that is the part that council can effect changes and go into the future. However, those DCL that has been collected, it cannot be reallocated. And also funding from property tax definitely is within council's jurisdiction to reallocate. Next line, please. And the last question that we're going to address today is just to show graphic, geographically, where those one-off large projects are located within the city. So here you see two different colors. The green colors, those are the major projects that are about to start in, which are funded from the current capital plan. But the construction side of things will will go all the way, you know, to the next capital plan. And in and the red basically are are those projects that we have included in the draft capital plan. So in front of you, you can actually see like, you know, for for the existing plan, the the Oakridge Centre, Community Centre, it will be delivered as in kind by the developer. And it will happen, it's happening imminently. And also it will also kind of like span through the next couple of years. Marco Community Central Renewal as well. It is funded from the current capital plan and construction, hopefully, is going to start soon and it will carry through for the next couple of years. And one, one, one project that we forgot to put on the map is actually the Grandview Woodland Fire Hall Number Nine. And it will also include the the fire headquarters as well. So on the red dots, those are the the major projects that we have included in the proposed plan, the Aquatic Centre, the amphitheater in P and E, Raycam Animal Shelter Renewal. And there are also an E F L, the Community Centre, which will be delivered in partnership with the developer. And then there are a number of other non community facility type projects, like a number of parks in Southeast Falls Creek in Barat Slopes. And also some bridge project as well is to 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 add to the resilience of the Grandpa Bridge and also the Canby Bridge. So that basically, just to give you a nutshell, some of the major projects geographically located across the city. Next line, please.
Thank you, Grace.
Thank you.
I'm now going to ask, before we just turn turn it over to you to counsel to all the questions you want to ask us, I'm just going to ask our city manager, Paul Mocree, to come up and say a few closing words regarding what we presented to you over today and the thirty first. Thanks.
Thanks, Karen. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So yeah, just a couple of closing messages. First, as has been indicated, we have, just to acknowledge that we have definitely heard the direction from councils, particular policy areas, climate, infrastructure and many renewal, housing, those cross cutting policy areas that you're looking to understand how those are reflected. As work that we are doing, we'll be able to present that back to you. But just wanted to again reinforce that we are very conscious of those. And the plan that you've seen here, although you haven't seen it expressed in that way, does reflect those priorities. The other point I'd like to raise is back to the first point that's addressed in her comments around revenue and of increased tax revenue for the plan. So I would strongly recommend you, council, are contemplating this plan, the proposed investments, the trade offs. You do so within the projected funding envelope that staff have recommended. So a couple of points behind that. One is, you you'll note that this plan represents a twenty-two percent over the current four year plan, including a sixty-four percent increase in city cost. So this is a big lift relative to where we are today already. And we do recognize that there's likely a whole range of investments that you would like to see advanced in the next four years that may not possible within that funding envelope. And yes, the next council of, as its lever, the opportunity to increase taxes and more capacity to fund those investments. As Grace indicated, and you've heard a couple of times from us, this plus a revenue assumption of an increased property tax rate every one percent every year years to continue to build out our capacity for infrastructure and amenity renewal. A really significant commitment, it continues the significant commitment you've made during your term to fund these real assets and the renewal of those. And again, the next council could build on to that and apply a bigger tax increase. I would say, though, that it's, it would not for this council to make that decision at this point in time. Of note, not reflected in here anywhere, the significant costs, capital related costs that city taxpayers will be forced to take that are being passed on from Metro Capital probably next four years and beyond. In addition, there will be significant pressure on our operating, but all well aware of just the general rate of inflation right now. We we are operating budgets and our tax funded budgets in particular will be under significant for the next four years. So ultimately, if the next council does look at this capital plan and does want additional projects, that council will have the opportunity to contemplate a higher tax rate and burden. It's much easier to do that and to bring forward additional projects into the plan, proceed on the basis of an unrealistic tax expectation that the next council can accept and then have to essentially unwind this plan. So I would just leave a piece of advice. Again, it does create the opportunity to identify priority projects that may not end and pass those on to the next council for consideration. But I would, again, think really, really closely around the tax rate assumptions that are built in here and the potential temptation to kind of inflate those assumptions. Last piece is, you've heard this from us, and I'm probably beating a dead horse here, but complexity of in this plan of matching expenditures to funding sources suggests at this stage in the process that it's probably not a great opportunity or right time to engage at the level of detail and specific project. I think if certainly if there's questions around those things, we're happy to provide as much information as we. In terms of any guidance or direction to us at this point, I think thematically, higher level is much more helpful. And then we can do the work to respond and come as appropriate with suggestions or how we might respond to that high level of direction as dealing at a detail level. That would be quite complicated, I think, to for us to manage at this stage. So Karen, with that, I think, council, we're happy to take any questions that have arisen out of what you've heard over the last day and a half, I guess, of these sessions. Thanks.
Hey, thanks so much. A number of councillors on the queue. Counselor Kirby Young, you're up first.
Yeah, before I begin, Mayor, can I move for a second round?
Sure.
Mayor, if I could, what we what we thought would make sense for council, it's completely up to you, is that you first have a round of questions specifically around the large one off projects, which you see on the screen right now, and then it opened up to more general conversation. Or if you prefer, we're happy to just take whatever questions you want in whatever order.
Well, councillors are on the list now and I'm not sure what their preferences are. And so let's just, since we have a move for for a second round of questions, I'll just let councillors decide if they, I think we'll just probably have to take all the questions at once at this point. And with that, do we have a second or for Counselor Kirby Young's motion?
Second, Tom Minato.
Thank you.
Seizure here. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Swanson.
My Kristen isn't working. Could you put me on the list?
Sure, okay. All in favor of a second round of questions, say yay.
Yay.
opposed, may? Great. Okay, so Counselor Kirby Young, I'll reset your timer here. Up to five minutes.
Great, thanks, Mayor. I'm going to start with questions on specific projects. So my first one is to Chief Rye with respect to Fire Hall needs. And I know that you spoke to, for example, some of the unfunded in terms of Canby Land, Kensington and Downtown South. Council have received some correspondence and had some dialogue around Fire Hall Number Eight in Yelltown. And I didn't see you reference that specifically in your presentation, but did understand that that was previously unfunded for renewal. Can you comment on where that sits now?
Hi, thank you. Yeah, the downtown South Yelltown is, we called it the Yelltown in Northeast Fire Hall. It's outgrown. I do believe we've had some preliminary talks as of the last day or two on co joining facilities with housing and childcare as an option. And that space that we are looking at, it's imminent that we try to move that one ahead quicker or we may lose that opportunity. Does that?
Okay, so is it fair that we will, based on those conversations, that we'll see updated information when this draft plan evolves? Because we're not seeing sort of a specific commitment. And the staff presentation last week indicated that was unfunded. Now, so are we expecting that we'll see an update on that with potential funding towards that?
I'm going to ask Grace Chang to respond to that, please.
Yes, this is correct. We are looking into that and at the minimum, we will be providing design dollars. But we are trying to kind of see to source funding for the construction as well.
Okay, super. Thanks. I'm going to keep going for time. The Gastown Streets work and through the national allocation for that, and I know it was presented, that might possibly be phased over to capital plans. Can you speak to what scope of what type of work or restoration might be involved in the contemplated allocation for Gastown Streets?
Yes, hi. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Lon Leclair, General Manager of Engineering Services. So in the draft capital plan that we have in front of you, that we have seven million is set aside for works in Gastown. That would deal with some of the immediate needs that are kind of urgently, we're actually working on the design of those right now. Our plan would be to have those constructed in the first two years of the capital plan before you. There's there's.
Would that be, for example, repair of Water Street only, like how far would that extend? I'm looking to get a sense of magnitude of how far those dollars would go and what might be covered.
Yeah, thank you. It would be a portion of the square. So the Gassy Jack Square and the the Blood Alley, Trance Island portion. So that's the pieces that we would expect to build. And then the total project is probably around thirty-five million. What we'd be doing is if we can advance design work on other portions of Gastown, we would seek a kind of a capital plan adjustment in the second half of the capital plan to to look at ways we could fund the the next phase of work.
So without any further adjustments based on the current state, we wouldn't be looking at repair for Water Street?
Not the entire section of Water Street. And there is a lot of work for us to do in terms of design because there is some options in terms of just restoring what's there versus kind of doing something different that is, you know, more responsive to day today's needs in Gastown.
Okay, I'm going to leave that there for now, since it's a bit of a fact finding question session. I'm wondering with respect to the East Fraserlands Community Centre and the decisions that council took recently in terms of working with the developer to advance that community center, are we contemplating that we'll be able to deliver that plan built within this capital cycle by the end of twenty twenty-six? Anybody?
We're just going to ask Donnie to respond to that. I think we're just figuring out who's going to respond. Just hold on a sec. Is there somebody from Planning on the line that can respond to that? Chris Robertson, perhaps?
I can answer another question as well. I'll pose to if we're gonna, if it might be the same folks. Also, the status of the Aquatic Centre and how long it's going to last without issues. It's like that, since it's aging significantly, and I think we know what those are, so maybe we can combine those two questions.
Thank you, councillor. It's Donny Rosa, GM for the Park Board. Maybe I could ask my colleague Armin to speak to the Aquatic Centre.
Certainly, so.
Can we deal with the Fraserlands first? Because I've lost about forty-five seconds and I only have five minutes on this question so far. Just.
Thank you, Commissioner or councillor. I apologize. My apologies. I'm pulling this up. With the recent council approval of policy changes to expedite this, can it be delivered and completed? Following council approval, the tenure and financial capital plan in twenty twenty-one, staff have been working with the developer on rezoning application at density with Area One. The application was submitted. Essentially, based on the current information, it's expected to take approximately five to six years to complete it. May be possible to identify timing efficiencies once the detailed planning starts.
Thank you. I'll put myself back on. Thank you.
Councillor Dominado?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, thanks for the updates in the presentation. I'll start with the large one off projects. And a question I have is whether in identifying and and putting these projects in the draft plan, we had a geographic lens applied to it because I was noting from the map that for the most part, the projects are in the north part of the city, recognizing if you overlay density that we do see higher density in the north part. But I know there are some priorities in in south, in the south part of the city. So I'm just curious if staff could comment on that.
Thank you. I think that question is best directed to the finance team. Grace?
Yes, we do. Actually, that does reason why when we presented the map earlier on, we we want to kind of also showcase what is, what are being delivered by developers and also what projects or major projects that will only be starting at the end of this current capital plan and which will span, you know, over the next couple of years. On the south side is the Marpo Community Centre renewal and Outdoor Pool. And the EFL one, I think we just kind of covered, will be delivered by the developer. And then Oak Ridge as well. Oak Ridge is going to be developed by developed by the developer. And then, yeah, so and also Fire Hall Five and Fire Hall Seventeen as well. So we haven't, we put it this way, we always look at the geographical, I would say, allocation of the projects so that it was, it will be more equitable. It's not just all on the west or all on the north or or east. However, I think that that is just a snapshot or some examples of the projects.
Great. Thanks, Grace. That was super helpful. I want to circle back to streets and specifically a slide from last week's presentation where it talks about funded and unfunded. I'm just hoping that Lon could speak to it. And specifically, there's two columns, and I just want to be clear that it talks about in active transportation, neighbourhood traffic management, that there's 40 million allocated. And then, but then it references an unfunded element of 20 million, the city, 20 million partners. And so is that over and above the 40 million that's allocated?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, so I'm trying to drill drill down on this because one of the areas that I hear from residents on a regular basis is the the ongoing and really desperate need to see more investment in pedestrian crossings, both pedestrian safety, cycling safety. And so what would it take to increase that? My my recollection from previous capital plans is that this wouldn't be debenture borrowing. This would be likely transfers from operating into capital to fund some of the regular street maintenance and upgrades like this, including some partner funding from Translink. But I'm trying to get a sense of what ultimately the public will get out of this on a year to year basis. Because when I last asked some of these questions, it was around, well, we can probably fund, you know, six to eight pedestrian crossings a year with lights and beacons. And so I'm really trying to get a handle on how, what does that translate into on an annual basis for the public? When they're saying, you know, we're seeing collisions at this intersection. So could you kind of help paint the picture for me of what we would see?
Well, I can start to answer that question, and then maybe I could look to finance to confirm. A large, the majority of our funding for transportations comes from DCL funding. So this would generally be the things that we talk about, which are new versus renewal. And with that DCL funding, we usually have partner contributions. And those are from ICBC for safety improvements and Translink for walking, cycling and transit improvements. So the the level of investment that we are making in the transportation is really, we're dividing up the portion of money that we get from transportation DCLs. Finance, did you want to add anything to that?
I think you have covered it all, basically all the renewal and maintenance, all those, whether it is pay as you go or whether it's debenture, they're all coming from property tax, which is a transfer from operating budget to capital budget. But Lon is right. I mean, for all those new and expansion stuff, it's all funded from DCL, Transportation DCL.
Okay, I'll take, I'll send it as a separate question, but I'd really like to get a better understanding and what ultimately we would see tangibly is what can we fund year to year in that capital plan, particularly around things like cycling enhancements, pedestrian crossings and so on. I want to shift over to technology because there was the focus on the technology presentation. And my understanding was that as part of our work to handle more pedestrian safety responses and questions around traffic enhancements, that we were going to have an online platform where the public could one, input their requests, but also get a sense of where things sit in the queue. So, you know, someone expresses concern about pedestrian crossing, but there was going to be like a digital platform that would help people navigate that and understand in real time the progress being made in these areas. I'm just, is that coming under the technology portfolio? Is that under engineering and streets? And what's the status of that? Is it part of the capital plan?
Our chief technology officer had to step away, so we're going to take that question away and get back to you, councillor.
Okay, that's no problem.
You're at your five minutes, so I'm going to
Thank you. I'll go back on the queue.
Councillor Frye.
Yeah, thanks. And yeah, just say it's nice to see so many of your faces today. It's been a while for a lot of us, so nice to be here and nice to see y'all. I have like a real sort of general question about sort of KPIs, looking at the past capital plan. So I've been going through the 2019, 2022 and and seeing some things that are on the list from then that we approved and presumably paid for in that capital plan. And there's sort of carrying through, wondering if there's an opportunity to have a kind of comparative, like what are the KPI? What do we get done versus what we promised to do in that capital plan? And I bring this up because I look at some of the fire halls in particular, like, like Five and Seventeen, which we kind of articulated as things we accomplished in the last four years. But I don't think they were they were in the most recent capital plan. And so those are some of the kind of questions I'm grappling with. So we look at Five and Seventeen, for instance, as accomplishments in the last capital plan, but they weren't funded from the last capital plan as it's framed in this language. And I know that FIRE had reached out about some notions of a new a new hall every year or every capital plan, for instance.
Thank you for the question. I'm going to ask Grace Cheng to respond for the finance team on the possibility that we could do that analysis. So specifically, what was what was committed to in the current capital plan and what have we delivered on? Grace?
Yes, we can definitely report back on that. So there's a difference between when a project is being funded versus when a project's being delivered. In particular, for some of the the projects like Fire Hall, some of the fire halls, in particular, when housing is on top and some sort of co-location situation, you need to go through rezoning and it takes time. However, that being said, right now, there, we have been putting a lot of concerted effort in terms of how do we streamline the whole delivery program so that we can actually deliver more timely and also more cost effectively. So this is an ongoing, I would say, process enhancement enhancement projects that we're going through right now. But we can definitely report back as well.
Yeah, thanks. I think that'd be helpful because it is a little confusing when when comparing the the capital plan versus the deliverables we see in these reports. So do we have a sense of how we've accomplished the deliverables that we committed to in the in the last capital plan? Have we? Are there any flags that we we may not have met the the goals?
So in other words, just an overarching percent delivered kind of figure? Is that what you're asking? Grace?
I would defer this to Patrice. My understanding is roughly like 70 somewhat percent, depending on whether it's ongoing program versus specific project. Patrice, would you like to comment on that?
We generally are in that in that range, and I think for this plan we will be as well. But why don't we get the actual data for you and we'll send it over?
Okay, I appreciate that. I'm just looking at my clock. I'm going to be coming back. Then Ty's not here for IT questions, right?
No, unfortunately, he had to step away. But you can ask the question and we'll certainly get it.
Well, I'm certainly curious about depreciation of technological assets because I know in the business world, that's that's a cost recovery kind of, and obviously, we move through technology very quickly in today's day and age. And I'm curious what we do with end of life machines and that kind of thing and how how we exact a cost recovery, if that's even a consideration.
Okay, we'll get back to with the answer, what we do with our old technology and do we do we generate any revenue by selling it? Is that the question?
Yeah, and how we write it off and that.
How we write it off. Okay, sure.
Okay, with my last minute and a half, I'm curious, I don't see any dollar amounts on the on the VPD. And I'm very curious about what we're projecting, because there's there's no money attached in this report. I'm curious why we see sort of unfunded amounts and stuff in other ones.
Are you referring to the new headquarters or?
Yeah, I'm actually, yeah.
Okay. I'm going to ask Steve Frye to respond to that, please.
Talk about the facility.
Yeah, yeah.
So when it comes to police facilities, I mean, you can look at some big cities in North America and you're looking at, you know, a billion dollars for like an LAPD kind of thing, huge population. For Vancouver, you're looking at, you know, this is discussion based in phases. So ultimately, you're looking at a multipurpose disaster proof building at 600, 650, 650 million dollars as a long term phased in approach to an all purpose building. And again, it's not it's not a VPD headquarters as much as a city of Vancouver disaster center point to manage a disaster.
So this considers opportunities for co-location of other city services, for instance, and unloading maybe other city services to help sort of consolidate.
I I wouldn't, I wouldn't get into how the city would come around to that figure. It's, is it a priority to to have a facility in keeping with probably every other major city in North America and prioritizing so, you know, that would be for council.
We may have to come back because I'm out of time and I know there's lots of, thanks, Steve.
Councillor Wade?
Yeah, really appreciate the report and kind of the background. First question's on risk matrix. Do we have a risk matrix that we can look at that showcases where the Aquatic Centre was? And then obviously, it bumped up the list. But do we have a risk matrix for all our facilities in Vancouver? And so that when we are looking at some of these trade offs that we need to make as council, we understand what the risk is, what level of risk it is to unfund something or to fund one of the projects we have.
Yeah, thanks for the question. And by risk matrix, are we talking about basically facility condition assessments?
In most boards, like East Park and others, they have a risk matrix of basically the capital funding projects, knowing what would happen if you don't fund it, if you extend funding, how much, right, the cost would be. So they had different color coding and different organizations I've been in that kind of allow elected officials or board members to understand where their decision making needs to be at with some of the projects. So I know like for pools, we know some of the pools are in pretty bad condition. So extending life for a little bit might be okay, but you could have a risk of that having a failure and costing this much more. So understanding the issues, doing capital planning on certain facilities. And I know the Aquatic Centre jumped up, but for a lot of the stuff here, it says difficult risks or risk of not meeting bylaws or not meeting standards. But you don't really have a clear understanding of what that real risk is. So I'm just wondering, do we have a list for each one of the departments of kind of their big projects and what the risk of not doing it or doing it is?
Okay, thanks for the question. I'm going to ask Grace Cheng or someone from the finance team to respond, please.
I would suggest maybe for facilities, I'll defer to RAFM. Thank you.
I can I can answer that. Karen, it's Armin.
Armin, if you just introduce yourself first. Thanks.
Certainly, it's Armin Amarilia. I am the interim GM for RAFM. Councillor Webb, we have FCI index that we use to capitalize, to look at all of the the capital projects that in our portfolios. And we are looking at that critically all the time. There are, there are critical matrices that we use to assess risk of each of those buildings. Staff are just in the process of finishing and finalizing the last review of all of those projects. And so we can actually get that to you pretty quickly.
So we'll add that to the list of things we'll distribute to council after this session.
Okay, how about risk matrix for HR departments and other ones, recognizing if we don't fund a certain position, we could have lost employment or we could have lawsuits against us if we don't fund this. Do we have a risk matrix that you guys as staff utilize in decision making? So maybe city manager, do you have a a chart that recognizes when making really difficult capital plan decisions that you recognize if we don't fund this position, we might lose people or we could have a loss of life or something could happen?
Yeah, thanks for the question, councillor. We absolutely do. So we have an enterprise risk management program. It's managed by our chief risk officer. So and we apply that lens to all of our operations across the board. So we have a list of risks. We rank all the risks that the city faces and we manage those on an ongoing basis. So capital is one kind of small component of that. The departments do that risk assessment when they're putting forward the plans that you're seeing here. So they have already, they have already built that risk assessment in. So that that is part of the recommendation. That's one of the inputs that we make to the recommendation that's coming forward for you. Happy to provide more of a briefing around the kind of dimensions of risk that we look at in our enterprise risk management framework. And we can engage Patrice and our chief risk officer in that as may be helpful for council.
Yeah, it just might be helpful in some of the prioritization because some of these, it says life, safety and loss revenue for renewing critical park buildings. And there's different ones. To me, it'd be interesting to know what is that risk and what are the opportunities? Another one for me is what are the opportunities? So I noticed that Hastings Park is one that's unfunded, but I know we had some federal funding. So what are the opportunities that if we don't fund something, we might not get the leverage funding for those projects? And so I'm just wondering, where's federal funding allocated to some of these capital projects if they're not funded or funded?
Yeah, again, another great question. So we do have an emerging priorities kind of unallocated bucket. And in large part, the intent of that is to provide us capacity when there are other funding opportunities. I mean, generally, our first priority for senior government funding is to fund things that are already in the plan. So our ideal would be that it's actually displacing city funding, but often it's an opportunity to fund something new that's not in the plan. And that's where we'd be looking at emerging priorities as the source for the city's contribution in respect of those projects.
Okay, I recognize the time. I will go back on cue. Thank you.
Councillor Harvick?
Yes, thank you. I brought up the the last workshop, the memo from Patrice on the report back on city funds allocated to downloaded services that have traditionally been delivered by senior governments. And I'm looking at the chart in the back of that report that shows the breakdown between operating and capital. And there's a total of 51.5 million dollars attributable to the capital budget in two sections of of downloading and emerging areas of potential senior government participation. I know that they don't necessarily relate directly to the the capital projects that we're looking at here. But in the larger context, my my question is, are we examining in our evaluation of these capital projects, the downloading aspect as detailed in this report?
Grace, can I ask you or someone from your team to respond, please?
Yes, I can respond to to this. We can address it from a downloading perspective or we're we're addressing it from a partnership perspective. Say, for example, housing, we always have a funding formula that we have in mind. Say, if the city of Vancouver is providing land, what kind of equity contribution or grant contribution and also low cost financing we expect from senior government to kind of do it? So we never provide 100% of the cost. This is one of those examples. Childcare as well. We are trying to kind of leverage provincial funding to 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 deliver, you know, for our childcare spaces. So basically, we're providing like 80% and provincial government right now is providing 20%. So these are some of those kind of existing funding formula. We always want to advocate for more senior government funding so that we're not in it alone. So.
Yeah, but it still costs us. So let's, you know, if we're putting up 80%, we're getting 20%. It's still costing us. So we can talk about partnerships all we want. It is weighing on our taxpayers and our budget. So my question again, in in this examination of the capital budget, I asked about this in the last meeting, I'm asking about it again. I would very specifically like to see the downloaded elements from that were detailed in this plan addressed as part of this capital plan going forward.
Yes, we can quantify that. And at the same time, just want to reiterate that in particular about housing and childcare. All the CACs council can actually choose to allocate, you know, as part of your public hearing approval. And then also for DCL, there is a DCL review for the next 10 years, how do we reject the allocation? So this is totally within council's purview. And in particular, on the property tax side alluded to earlier, council can choose to reallocate, it's totally within council's jurisdiction.
Are we looking at the same time at the inflationary impact of the CACs, DCLs and other forms of of developer cost levies? We know that by accelerating rezoning in particular to generate this revenue, it's inflating land values and making things more unaffordable. So we're chasing our tails a bit in terms of affordability because of this business model that we assumed, I understand, significantly regularizing developer contributions starting in 2009. So I am concerned that we have a more thorough analysis because we're doing the same thing and expecting a different outcome. There's a definition for that. And we are continuing to inflate land And we are continuing to inflate land values as, as a product of, of this business model that we've assumed. So I think it's important that we have a larger conversation about the impact of inflation based on this business model. So I don't want to take up a bunch of time. I know we're focused right now on the individual big-ticket items on the capital plan. But I think we need to be having a larger discussion about the, the plan, particularly through the lens of downloading and additional costs. So I'll park it there, but as long as it doesn't get forgotten because, you know, we tend to look at, look at what's here instead of look at what the model is that, that we've created. So thank you very much.
We'll get that information to you, counsel.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Swanson.
Yeah, I'm looking at the allocation for the SRO acquisition strategy, which I thought was a billion dollars that we were hoping for. And I see there's twelve million in there from us and twelve million from partners, which is twenty-four million. So I'm figuring this is going to take us a hundred and sixty years to get to the one billion. So can we at least come up with maybe trying to get more from the partners so that we can speed this up a bit?
Counselor Swanson?
Have a goal of getting more from the partners?
Sandra Singh, General Manager, Arts, Culture and Community Services. We are right in the process of developing the tripartite strategy with the province and with the federal government in relation to SROs. We do anticipate it's a multi-capital plan strategy over at least fifteen years. So what you see in here is, is, is an initial kind of estimate of what we would like to put forward in the next four years. And we will continue to draft out that plan. And we do anticipate that there'll be a much more significant senior government allocation. And we do recognize in this planning that we are the junior level of government and, and we will need considerable resources from both the province and the feds.
Okay, thanks. And then there's unfunded twenty-five million for supportive housing and unfunded two million for the SRO investment strategy. Can we, can we go ahead and proceed with trying to acquire these SROs? If we don't have the two million for the investment strategy?
So the two million identified in the unmet elements would be the city's contribution to the, to the planning and administration of the strategy. It will be a very significant piece of work that will require an ongoing staff team from all three levels of government, including feasibility studies and research. And so that, that two million there is, would be our administrative contribution to, to that long-range strategy.
But it's unfunded?
At this point, it is an unfunded elements, yes.
Okay, I'm just wondering, I was hoping that at some point we would get a number as to how much money we need to actually meet the housing need for people who are homeless and low-income people. And I'm wondering if that's going to be coming or if we have any idea of it right now?
Yes.
I was just, okay.
Yeah, that, that work is almost complete and we should have a memo for council this spring. As well, there's an additional council motion related to, relating to required funding around housing delivery. And we'll be reporting on that before the capital plan also through a memo.
Okay, thanks. And then the DCL waivers for purpose-built report on getting rid of those?
And what's the question about the DCL waivers?
Are we going to be keeping them for purpose-built rentals, given that developers can get them for building units that actually have rents that are higher than the market rentals in their area?
Thanks, I'm going to ask Dan Garrison from our planning department to respond to that.
Thank you for the question. We are considering that, Counselor Swanson, the DCL waivers and the structure of the waiver program through the DCL review that's underway right now. So we are looking at a range of options with what to do with the DCL waivers, including keeping the waivers, completely removing the waivers and a few options in the middle such as waivers for, for rental with more affordability built into it. So we're looking at that range of options. That'll be coming back to you later in the spring.
Okay, and can we put housing on top of everything? Like fire halls, libraries, community facilities, are we thinking of that?
So the question is co-locating housing with other city amenities?
Yeah.
Counselor Patrice Simbi, we look at all those options in, and that's a big piece of the, of the capital planning is looking at the co-location opportunities to optimize really the land that we have. So we've, we've done that both with housing on top of fire halls, et cetera, but also co-locating our, our community centers with libraries, et cetera. So that's a big part of the plan, so short answer is yes.
Last question here is what percent of the housing that we're talking about in this plan is net new rather than replacement or moving, like moving TMHs?
I'm, I'm going to stop you there, Counselor Swanson, because you're at your five minutes. However, I've just been talking back and forth with the clerk. And we actually have to include the questions we asked last meeting under council procedures. So if we're going to go to more questions from Counselor Kurby and Counselor Wade, which would be a third round of questions for them, I do need a, a motion to suspend the procedural bylaw in order to enable that.
Mayor, I believe that would be a second round, not a third?
Today it is, but we have to include the questions from the last, this is the last council. So can I have a motion for that?
I'm moved to Counselor Dechunova.
Thanks, the secondor?
Counselor Boyle.
All in favor, yay?
Yay.
Opposed, nay? Great, okay, we've extended. So Counselor Swanson, you can put yourself back on the bottom of the list for another question. Counselor Carr, please go ahead. And I believe this is your, I think it's first, first today, but maybe you asked one, anyway, go ahead.
Thank you, thanks very much. So first, just like Counselor Swanson talks about, can we put housing everywhere? I'm talking about can we tackle the climate crisis with all our projects? But I'm going to start with fire and happy to hear that downtown South Yalstown fire hall is now being contemplated. I think that's an important one if I look at the density in that area. So just a, a point about that. But, but are we analyzing the increased risks such as in Yalstown, such as in the Canby corridor of increased population, towers, that, yeah, they just increase the stress, the, the ability to respond fast, the, the potential around fires?
Eifri, I'm going to invite you up to answer that, please.
Yeah, thank you for that, Counselor. We are completing or just about completed our thirty-year fire hall study review. And that does take into kind of the first do-in response and being able to have apparatus at the, within being able to arrive on scene within six to seven minutes to be able to mitigate and knock down those fires as a first in. And then as long as the ERF. As far as looking at the capacity in each hall, that's something that we would look further to with things like our dark horse plan for the total number of firefighters within each station in each facility. And we should always continue to have facilities where they can expand depending on, or expand depending on where the growth and calls for service are.
Okay, thank you, that's great. I was very disturbed by hearing that there are firefighters in fire halls that do not have heat pumps. And we have heat domes and we can expect more heat domes. Can you make that request or how is, how does it work out so that we can actually get our fire halls outfitted with heat pumps so that they can be safe places in terms of the health of firefighters?
Thank you very much for that. That is probably number one on my list for this year and next year into our continued capital renewal projects. And some of that funding that we are going on that because we need to have comfort for those. And it's very hot in those facilities.
And they're already stressed by the calls, thank you. And overall, I, I'm going to talk about climate a bit, oh, sorry, just before that, West End Community Hub. Can we have data on how much has been collected in community amenity contributions towards the West End plan to, to provide for those services and, you know, sort of desperate in that area, the population is increasing a lot?
Thanks for the question. Grace, over to your team for this one, please.
Yes, that one, we can report back on, on, on the community, sorry, the CAC collected today. We can report back later.
Thanks very much, appreciate that. Fire Hall, sorry, the Fire Hall Arts Theatre renewal. I've been there, you know, I, I just got a report, high, high storms. There's water in there, electrical rooms in the basement. Why aren't we, I mean, this seems like a big risk to a key community asset.
I'm going to ask Sandra Singh, GM of Arts, Culture and Community Services, to respond to that, please.
Thank you, Counselor, for the question. Yes, the Fire Hall Theatre is a one-hundred-year-old building, a forty-year-old theatre with, and it's, it is long overdue for upgrades. We did, we did the feasibility study with the last capital plan and, and determined that we'd, it's a, it's a building that's adjacent with the Police Museum. So it's phased over, over both of those organizations. So we are, we have in our unmet needs category just treating the Fire Hall Theatre and doing some of those critical buildings, upgrades as well as dealing with the accessibility.
It's still in the unfunded list though, so we may bring it up. I may bring it up next, and I know that we have to do that analysis. And also in terms of just the West End, very concerned to hear our chief librarian, Christina Castell, talk about the library being at capacity on opening day. I don't need to answer that, just very concerned that we're not planning with the anticipated growth that is already happening in the West End faster than the plan ever anticipated. Way more housing units there. So, okay, final, final question. This week, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change put out another assessment report and specifically for policymakers like us. And the language in it is incredibly dire. I mean, it talks about this, there is no time to wait for investments in climate. I know I'm running out of time, but I want to know if we've analyzed this capital plan in terms of how much we are actually spending to bring down GHGs and by how much we can bring down GHGs in this plan?
Counselor asked us for that at the last, the first half of the session and staff is busily working away to make sure we can provide you the most accurate information. We plan to get that to council very soon by memo.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Counselor Kirby Young?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm going to start off with the Aquatic Centre question and I just want to frame this out a little bit. Is that what's the allocation made for the new Aquatic Centre, if any? What would be the total to renew it? And is there an opportunity to augment this with CACs that are coming from future area development projects that council may not yet have approved? And significantly, what's the safety rating and lifespan of the current facility now?
Thank you, I'm going to ask the finance team, Grace, to respond to those sets of questions, that set of questions.
Right, from a funding perspective, the, the Aquatic Centre is a hundred percent funded in the current draft capital plan. Just, just to reiterate again, we will never contemplate any CACs that has not gone through council approval to include in the plan, whatever we have received will be included in the plan. So it's a hundred percent funded. It's between renewal dollars and also CAC together to fund the renewal and expansion of the Aquatic Centre.
So just to be clear, you're saying that we're going to renew and deliver a new Aquatic Centre in the next capital plan?
Yeah, yeah, it's in the draft. It's fully funded.
I didn't see a line item specific against it. And what will that deliver? Will that deliver the expanded vision for the facility that the heartboard had landed on?
Yes, it will be expanded, but we're still confirming the scale of expansion.
Okay, is that, is that amount going to spread over one or two capital plans? Are we, are we going for gold and putting it all into one capital plan or what does that look like?
In one capital plan, it's a hundred percent funded currently in the draft capital plan.
Okay, and is that because it's necessary because of the safety risk of the current building at this point?
I, I will let real estate to confirm that.
Armin?
Yeah, for sure. I'm Armin Amrulia, interim GM, RAFM. Thank you for the question. Yes, that's what we're looking for. We're looking at the feasibility right now of ensuring that we can actually do the design planning and at least start the construction for the new Aquatic Centre in this capital plan. So we are looking and targeting for digging and, and breaking ground at the end of around 2026.
Okay, but then my question was, is the, the work is necessary because of the age span and the safety rating of the building? Like, we, we need to do this, AKA we cannot put it off?
Yes, it's, it's, the FCI on that is very, very low. And so we were looking at critical end-of-life systems and it is absolutely getting critical for life and safety as well.
Okay, thanks, thanks, appreciate that. Moving on to another question, it's technology. Do we have the technology person or no?
We don't, but if you can ask the question, we will certainly get back to you as soon as we can.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really interested in an answer back. I know that there was reference to the fact that we can help support some business license applications online or people can submit plans electronically, but I'm looking for a more perspective and full some information on actually having the ability for real-time technology and automation of some of the permitting processes, the ability to check in on the status of an application for, you know, some of these systems you see where any staff member can pick up based on the history of something, move it forward versus what seems to more to be a bit asynchronous in terms of uploaded plans and things of that nature. So can we get some information back on when we could meaningfully?
Yes, we can.
Make some traction on that?
City manager is going to respond at least in part right now, thanks.
So yeah, thanks, Counselor, great, thanks for the question. Absolutely, that's the objective, is to provide people with that type of real-time access to the status of their applications. So we're, we're absolutely working in that direction. It's, it's a significant transformation of our existing systems. But, but yeah, the, the investment that Tig spoke about in our permitting and licensing systems, that's, that's one of the key objectives for that. So again, happy to provide more detail, but we're, we're definitely heading in that direction.
Okay, super cool, that would be really helpful. And maybe while you're there, you, you may not be the person, but you might be able to answer this question. It's around the City Hall campus that was contemplated in the last plan. And I know there's an ocean amount in terms of civic facilities and planning, but given the significant needs we have, like with an Aquatic Centre crumbling and other needs across the city, are we putting the City Hall campus planning on hold?
For the most part, I'll defer to staff on the details of whether there's any additional kind of scoping-type dollars in here. But, but generally, there's no significant investment in City Hall contemplated in this plan.
No.
Okay, great. And then I'll ask this other question, which is the Animal Control Centre, which might potentially have a significant lineup or allocation about it. We're hearing from things like we can't fund the Fire Hall Arts Centre right now. I understand a big part of that is around it's not accessible to artists or to patrons. It's not compliant with performing arts associations in terms of their regulations. Some pretty significant issues with accessibility there, no way to get artists in, in sort of, in an elegant and respectful way. So can something like the Animal Control Centre be deferred to a future capital plan to support other projects?
I'll ask Armin Amrulia to speak about the, why that, that project's been prioritized in this plan or the draft preliminary, preliminary draft plan, Armin?
Certainly, Armin Amrulia, interim GM, RAFM. Thank you for the question again, yes. So we're looking at co-locating this with the SPCA renewal that they're also doing on their site right now. And if we don't include it in this plan, I think we're going to lose the opportunity of that co-location, which will then cost the city a lot more funding to actually build a standalone animal services centre. So if we actually look at all of the synergies that we actually get with this co-location, we've made the, the commitment or certainly looking at the feasibility of actually co-locating our animal services centre with the new SPCA building. There, there seems to be a lot of synergy with, with the co-location.
Okay, thanks. I'll follow up with some more detail, I'm out of time, thank you very much.
Of course.
Counselor Wade?
Yeah, my first question stays mostly focused on the big projects. The ones that are unfunded, are we able to get a little bit more explanation? I think mostly to the public, like on some of them like Britannia, it looks like we're funding the design, but we're not going to be able to fund the building to 2027. Are we able to talk a little bit more that those projects are going along? Just what parts are funded and not funded?
Absolutely, when we bring, well, we're bringing the, if council as directs us to, we'll be bringing the plan out for a lot of public consultation through May. And the team will be working with our communications and civic engagement department to, to, to get all that messaging right. And we'll certainly include messaging around where there isn't funding to actually build something, where we're investing in continued planning and design to move toward a building phase.
Or just timing that we won't be able to get built by 2027 anyways, so that's why this is happening. It's just sometimes helpful for the public to know that their project isn't just being dropped, but it's continuously moving forward. My next one's coming from, being on the Personal Disability Advisory Committee. There's significant amounts in almost every single one of the departments, including community facilities, civic facilities, cultural facilities, heartboard act transportation, talking about reduced accessibility. And to me, this is a really key one, as well as under recreation facilities, accessibility inclusion improvements not being funded. Can you talk about why so much of the accessibility strategy is under unfunded?
Well, so.
Almost, I can go through them. So under recreation facilities, seven million, accessibility inclusion improvements, huge risk, under almost every other. huge risk. Under almost every other plan, it talks about reduced accessibility to Carnegie Gathering Place, Evelyn Sower, city-owned facilities. Active Transportation says neighborhood traffic management will have loss of accessibility. To me, looking at this and recognizing the struggles we've had to fund some accessibility improvements in the city and get the accessible city strategy passed, this concerns me because this is a component in an aging city that we need to address. So can we talk a little bit about how we can ensure public and mostly people that are dealing with coming out of COVID with accessibility issues that we will have an inclusive city for them?
Sure. I, I understand now you're referring to the unfunded elements of the plan when you're listing what isn't funded. We'd have to have a coherent conversation about that. We'd also have to share with Counsel all the elements in the funded, potential, you know, proposed funded plan that, that address accessibility. And we can add that to our to-do list if that would be useful for Counsel. Grace, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I was going to say exactly the same thing. We will quantify basically what we are funding at the minimum as a, as a rule of thumb. Basically, we will at least keep the same level of funding in the current capital plan plus an inflationary factor. So I think we are not losing out on, on, on the amount of funding. But I guess your question is, are we ramping up the funding? So we can report back on that.
Yeah, I know, just looking through almost every single one of the departments, they do have a section that talks about reduced capital funding that will reduce accessibility. And when looking at it from an accessibility lens, it was a little bit pronounced, and it came out to me. The next one is on a lot of the work that could have ROIs, and I don't know what the ROIs are. So when we're doing recirculating of water, recognizing that helped meet our bylaw, it also will reduce costs. Some of the green infrastructure can reduce costs. Do we have, and some of them say that they're only 10% for the cultural grants that could actually get more money. Do we have ROIs where if we do fund this project over 10 years, it will reduce 100,000 per year of water costs, right? Or this project we fund now will have less maintenance costs over the next five years? So do we have plans where we can look at the ROI of some of these unfunded ones and funded ones? So we can show the public we're using good public dollars that will save us money by funding some of these projects?
Grace, can you speak to the team's work on business cases for individual projects or programs?
Yep. Well, yeah, I can, I can speak to that. So some of, we actually analyze the business case for some of those that have ROIs, but we don't do it for every single program. But we can actually look into, in particular, when you highlight, you know, green infrastructure, we can talk about, we can report back on that as well.
Okay, I just see some that like, we know how much illegal street vending is costing our city, and however, we're not funding the Palace CD Hub. Or like, there's a few of these that we know what it's going to cost by not doing these projects. And to me, some of these probably are cost-neutral, or some of them we might actually save funding by doing the project. So it'd be interesting to see that data. So we can be like, okay, that makes sense if we don't fund that. Because some of the ones, mostly some of the social service ones, we've seen how much it costs to deliver stuff that we're not being proactive at. And so sometimes some of the stuff looks like we're underfunding the proactive approaches that we know cost us more in the long run. And so it'd just be interesting to have some of that data moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all.
Counselor Swanson?
Yeah, I just have one left here. I don't know if you can answer it right now, but maybe in an email. I'm wondering what percentage of the housing in the capital budget is net new rather than replacement? I know we're, we're always thinking that we're building new housing or buying new hotels, but the homelessness doesn't seem to be going down. And I'm trying to figure out to what extent we're just replacing what we have rather than actually building additional new.
Yeah, thanks for the question. I'm going to ask Sandra Singh to respond, please.
Counselor, thank you for the question. On slide 12 of your presentation deck, in the draft capital plan, proposed allocation, we have itemized out the, the various unit counts associated with the proposed capital plan elements. In the four years, we're hoping to deliver through Vaha about 2,500 units. That'll be subject to senior government funding. But that's what we've, we're currently hoping for. There's an additional 900 units of new housing that we hope to enable through the CHIP program with nonprofit partners and about 725 units through inclusionary. But if you can take a look at that chart, and we can certainly follow up with any additional information.
Thank you.
Counselor Dominado.
Hi, thanks, Mayor. I'm, I'm wondering if staff could comment, and maybe it's communications, but how this will be presented publicly for public engagement? Because it is complex, and, and obviously, the question that goes on the ballot is related to dementia borrowing, is my recollection. And so could staff comment on, on how this information will be presented and digestible for the public to understand how, what the draft plan prioritizes in terms of new capital, in terms of maintenance, upgrades, and so on?
Sure, thanks. And I've just split that question into two parts because the question that goes on the plebiscite ballot is, is very specific and legalistic. And then there's the broader communications you're referring to. So in terms of the latter, I, I don't know, I don't see Maria Pontikis on the call. Do we have someone here from our Civic Engagement and Communications Department? I'm sorry, we're going to have to get back to you on that, on that question, Counsel. And in terms of the plebiscite question, perhaps Grace can address that one.
So can you repeat your question again? Is it about like, how do we educate the public on the dementia question?
I was, I was largely asking how we will be presenting the draft capital plan, and it is more of a communications question in terms of how that information's presented in a digestible format to understand what is new capital, what is maintenance, what, what is actually related to the ballot question, which is dementia borrowing? And so I think it is a communications question. I can take, have that offline. It doesn't have to be addressed right now.
Thanks. We'll, we'll get a fulsome response to you from our communications people. Thanks.
Yeah, I had one more question, but I've actually forgotten it. So I will follow up with an email. And I had a few more technology questions, so thank you.
Thanks. Counselor Carr?
Thanks. I just want to continue on, on how we're tackling climate, the climate crisis through our plan. And I'm happy we retrofit libraries, branches with HVAC. But could I, somebody, or maybe it's Christina de Castel, tell me how many of our libraries have actually got heat pumps so that they are safe places to retreat to in times of, of extreme weather events, both heat and cold?
We'll get Christina de Castel. We might need our real estate people to back her up. Here you go.
Thank you.
Christina de Castel, Chief Librarian and CEO of Vancouver Public Library. We do not have heat pumps at current library locations. We do have air conditioning at all locations but Carisdale. And there may be someone from RAFM who could specify what the upcoming plans are related to heat pumps.
Thank you. Yes, I appreciate that. And if RAFM is going to be commenting on libraries, I'm really interested in knowing just how many of our civic buildings, that would be libraries, community centers, other public-facing, well-used civic buildings have heat pumps.
We'll get back to you with that, with that. That doesn't sound like a number anybody's going to have at their fingertips, but we'll certainly get back to Counsel with that.
Okay, thank you. And Paul Mokri spoke to, you know, the, you didn't quite see the risks, but the wisdom of not going beyond the current protection in terms of increasing our borrowing and spending in terms of the capital plan. What really is the risk there? I mean, is the risk that if we increase the spending in the capital plan, that, that it will have an impact on, on taxes? Or can you just spell that for, out for me?
Yeah, thanks, Counselor. I think the primary risk is that those decisions will actually be made by the next Counsel. So if we build a capital plan that contemplates revenue assumptions that aren't realistic, we're going to have a plan that's not realistic. So that, that's my primary concern. Obviously, it will be the next Counsel that decides how much tax they want to impose and how much borrowing they want to take on. Obviously, there's, there's dementia borrowing that we need to settle here. But my advice to this Counsel is not to be overly aggressive on your tax revenue expectations or assumptions, because it's ultimately the next Counsel that's going to have to decide whether they want to impose those taxes or not.
Yes. And so, Paul, what if we don't increase this capital plan by sufficient amount of money to actually really tackle the climate crisis? And we end up four years later from now nearing 2030, when every major scientist in the world is imploring public decision-makers to put their heart and soul into tackling the climate crisis right now?
I, I think, I mean, it's, it's an excellent question, Counselor, but it's really a question for the next Counsel. Because this Counsel doesn't get to determine what the tax rates are in the next four years.
But if we don't plan for it now, how can they, would they, how could they change the capital plan after it's already been decided at public referendum or at least in the public election ballot?
Yeah, if you want to.
Counselor Carr, just, the capital plan gets updated very regularly through the, through the four years. If you remember, we did a midterm update partly through this capital plan. So there is lots of opportunity to reprioritize. But we do need to, you know, we need to set out a plan for, for us to start getting all of those things ready. And, but there is an opportunity for subsequent Counsels to shift. The one piece that, that is set is the amount of borrowing. So for renewal, where we use debt, that's the piece that gets set during the election. And for utilities, Counsel can change that, but for a nonutility, that's the piece that's fixed. Does that make sense? Thank you. I, I appreciate that, Patrice. So are not the upgrade of buildings, that are civic-owned buildings to include heat pumps, isn't that renewal? I'll ask Grace to confirm, but I think that would probably be under the renewal. Can you confirm?
Yes, the majority of it will be through property tax funded.
But that's, okay, so that is that dementia borrowing at this point? And then we repay with property tax? Okay, so what I really. So it could still be done out of property tax, new property tax. We don't, doesn't have to be out of borrowing, it could be out of property tax. We, we property tax funds, borrowing and pay-as-you-go? Yes. I know it's great to pay-as-you-go. We like to do that. But we also have a crisis, an existential crisis, that if, you know, and I'm, I'm hearing, I'm just so distraught by other governments at other levels who are simply not taking it seriously by their actions and investing. But I will not wrongly, but I won't go into that in detail. It's just that we have an opportunity with this plan to potentially increase the amount of borrowing we do to enable us to then have the funds in place. And yes, it has to be repaid, and I understand that that would, you know, that we have to have a payment schedule, we have to have income coming in to be able to pay that. But I'm just asking what the risks are of, of actually us increasing that borrowing now through a dementia so that we have the funds in place to be able to apply them as needed to the capital projects of upgrading at least our own civic buildings?
This is Grace. Maybe I can jump in.
We're actually over the five minutes, so we'll have to wait for a written response to that one. Counselor Dominado, you have three minutes left.
Thanks, and thanks, I just have two more questions. One is around if there's a way, as a follow-up, a document or graphic or visual to get an overview of the proposed capital investments and how they slot into what would be sort of the kind of critical core services that we typically at the city level cover, whether it be streets, whether it be sanitation, waste, and then other areas that, and also civic buildings, things like that, that are responsible in terms of maintenance, and then other areas. So that's just an ask to see it visually laid out because I continue to have concerns about whether particularly departments like engineering are getting the short end of the stick in terms of capital allocations as well as operating allocation. So that was one question that can be done offline. But my other question is around, particularly around solid waste, and a note from staff that zero-waste initiatives are primarily unfunded. And I'm curious why that is, and if that includes, for example, under sanitation, it says we're deploying, we've budgeted for deploying 350 new high-volume recycling and litter containers. Does that include zero-waste centers specifically in commercial areas, at public parks and pools and other areas? I've asked about previously. Or are those not included? But if you could just explain sort of why there is not any allocation for zero-waste initiatives or very little, based on the slides I'm seeing?
Thanks for the question. I'm going to ask Lon Leclerc to come respond to that.
Yes, so the high volume, the 350 high-volume recycling, they're recycling and litter containers. So they're, they're, they're going to be deployed in the areas where we see the, the greatest need and where we see bins overflowing. The, the reason that the diversion items are identified as unfunded is because they're, they're, they're high cost with kind of, I guess, harder for us to justify the cost of those. And so that includes the northern location, northern location of zero-waste facility and the diversion of challenging materials.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that. And I think I'll leave my questions there, but hopefully staff might be able to address my first question around getting a better sort of visual of the capital, proposed capital expenditures relative to core services and other services. Thanks.
Counselor Swanson, you have about three and a half minutes.
Could we borrow more for things that are absolutely crucial, like climate and housing?
Yep, I can answer that. Karen, do you want to, do you want me to answer? Okay, Grace Chang, long-term financial strategy. Yes, we, we actually look at our borrowing authority with regards to how much the operating budget can, and can use to fund the financing cost, which is like the principal payment as well as the interest cost. So we need to always kind of look at what is the impact of borrowing have on, on the operating budget for one. The second thing is, we also look at how the credit rating agencies are going to look at our debt load. And if they see it as like increasing in a rate that is not comfortable, then they would downgrade us. And that subsequently will increase our borrowing cost as well. So we actually look at multiple dimensions to look at what is the maximum borrowing envelope that we can actually take.
So this budget here is at the maximum, you're saying?
Yes, we have been increasing the borrowing authority or the borrowing capacity. So right now, we're, I would say we are treading, it's increasing in a way, but still within the, the parameters that we have from the credit rating agencies and also the ability for the operating budget to service the debt.
Could we squeak it up a little?
We have been trying. We have been trying, yes.
So what about this idea of, you're saying that we're, we're budgeting in a tax increase of 1% every year? What if we upped it to 2% for crucial things like climate and housing, where we end up paying more by not having them in the future anyway?
I can comment on that.
What would be the downside of that?
I'm actually going to ask the city manager to, okay, Grace, go ahead.
Yep. I think as Paul mentioned, I think this is just a capital plan. It is how we contemplate to kind of, you know, invest in our infrastructure and amenities over the next four years. However, the actual implementation will have to be approved as part of the annual budget by future Counsel. So I guess at the risk of projecting, I would say, a higher revenue envelope when it's not really controlled by this current Counsel, I think there is the risk that Paul is trying to, to, to allude to.
So hopefully, future Counsels will be concerned about these things. But, okay, thank you.
Great, thanks so much. That's it for questions. Thanks, staff, for all the work on this. Perhaps Deputy City Manager, you could walk us through the next steps?
Sure. I'm actually going to just pull up a slide to do that, if you bear with me for a second.
And I'll just ask the clerks, I guess we're, we're done with this one. And so I, I'm not sure if we recess or we adjourn. I guess I could look at my script. I will do that.
Okay, so am I good to go?
Yeah, please go ahead.
Okay, so this, oh, I need to share my screen again. Pardon me. Okay, you're going to see, this is, this is a slide we shared with you on March 31st. You've seen it before. And this shows you the next steps plotted out. We are going to embark on public engagement. I think those dates might be off by a couple of days, but basically, effectively, it's through the, the, most of May. We'll be taking the preliminary draft plan out to public engagement. That will happen after we come to you, Counsel, on April 26th with a, what the formal, we've been calling this the preliminary draft capital plan. What we will be bringing you on April 26th will be the draft capital plan. And, and you will be seeking your, your, your direction to take that out for public engagement. And at the end of that, we will bring a briefing back to Counsel in late June, and then in July, we'll come with the final capital plan for your approval. So that's calendar-wise next steps. And just pardon me, I got to jump around a little bit for a moment on the slides. Oh, no, I don't have any. So that's, that's what's going to happen in, and we don't have on the slides, which we've told you already today, is we have probably close to, getting close to 100 questions to answer for you. This team's going to be answering those questions that you put to us today and the ones that have come in through the last couple of weeks. At the same time, we are working to. At the same time, we are working to prepare that council report and the draft capital plan for your approval. Grace, did I miss anything?
I was gonna ask, so procedurally, if there are amendments that council would like to make, does that come at the April 26 meeting or the July meeting?
Council can opt to bring forward through a motion, amendments, or recommendations to staff at either of those. The challenge will be at the April meeting, that staff will have a very short turnaround time before we, to make the changes that council requests, and then get the draft plan out the door for the public engagement. So, we feel the optimum time for you to make adjustments to the plan will be at the July 6th council meeting, and you'll also have the benefit of the public input to the plan at that point, as you suggest changes to the draft plan.
Okay, thank you. And just a question to clerks, do we adjourn, I'm just looking, so we adjourn at this stage and then come back at a separate, a newly constituted meeting on April 26th? Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. There's the meeting on April 26th and July 6th.
Great, okay. So, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn?
No.
Mayor Stewart, can we just take a moment to have a break for just a moment before you? I need to speak with you offline.
Okay, great. I will, we don't have a second or yet, so I'll just take a pause for a second and come We do have an opportunity to make amendments today. I just that, I just want to point that out for your, for your knowledge. However, there are other opportunities, as pointed out by staff, either on April 26th or on, in July, to make other amendments. So, I'm pointing that out to you, and just want to see, we have a second or for the motion to adjourn.
Second, Counselor Boyle.
Thanks. All in favor, yea?
Yea.
Opposed, nay? Thanks. Okay, we're adjourned. Thanks, council, and we'll see you again soon, I'm sure. Thanks, staff.
Thank you, staff.